We've got either two children to parents.
Or even.
I was like, you're not playing with them.
He laid me down.
Oh, you're a jerk.
I was like, anyone?
Oh, I guess you're what's gonna do.
That's good.
Yeah.
I'm in.
And then he's still.
Three.
Oh, you're here.
Yeah.
All right.
You're wrong.
Yeah, you don't think it's true.
Yeah.
I mean.
No.
That's the case.
Yeah.
Yeah.
No, they're.
Yes.
Actually, they're.
Yeah.
Sure.
Yeah.
Yeah.
They say that.
Like, yeah.
Yeah.
I think.
Sorry.
It's true.
Yeah.
And then I.
And then I.
Good meeting.
Also.
That really.
Yeah.
A lot.
Yeah, I don't.
She was.
I think.
Leader.
And.
It's funny.
There were very.
Very hard.
They should have.
But.
Yeah.
I only heard it as a disaster, which.
Yeah, it's just.
Whether it was.
Because.
I do.
So.
I get.
Stop.
So.
I just think.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Or.
I'm here.
I did.
Almost.
I just.
But.
Yeah.
And I went out to dinner.
And.
You know.
You know.
Yeah.
You know, because.
Yeah.
It's not.
Well, I thought it was.
Like.
We all do.
Yeah.
Sure. That's how we're getting.
Yeah.
Yeah. The ones that go to parents are we're getting our school.
For.
At that school.
Mark.
You know, associate student.
Yeah, that.
But. That's how we get.
Put that key.
I know.
You know, that's.
Especially back in here.
Yes.
It just is not.
Like.
Four years.
Almost one percent.
Maybe.
Check that.
I think it was sent by almost.
Yes.
Yeah.
So.
To be on.
Right.
But I got.
Well.
Uh.
Right.
Okay. So you didn't get it in your personal. Because that one. It's a bunch of.
Right.
So like.
I.
One, two. But that doesn't swing.
Yeah.
But then like the way to.
You then.
I don't know.
I.
Oh, yeah. Although it is.
Well.
It is nice to know.
Right.
Yeah.
Right.
Okay.
But I know if it's almost.
Yeah.
It's.
Um.
It's an experience.
Well.
No.
But yeah.
That's what I know.
That.
My house is like.
Stuff. Well, there have been times when we were supposed to get it.
Well, the person will give us.
I didn't.
I mean.
I don't.
But this is.
I didn't receive this.
Yeah.
Yeah.
It's.
Me.
So.
Yeah.
This.
Well.
Six.
I usually.
Per.
Listen to being in the video.
It's like.
Like.
How she's.
If I'm.
You.
It's.
Well.
Now.
You're like.
Yeah.
It's like.
I.
It's like.
It's.
Love my reporting. Really like. Want to go into the. We're about. Fox. Streaming. Players. Forward.
Yeah.
Kevin. Kevin's home.
Yes.
Yeah. Um. They. They made me request authorization. They. Well, room is trying to. To go like.
Yes.
Yeah.
She didn't.
Was.
First.
Thank you.
Thinking.
In a lot.
There.
I.
I.
Um.
Maybe that's.
Who.
Same.
Yeah.
I'm wondering. Yes.
So I do.
I think it's.
The.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Well.
I ended up calling.
I was like.
Very strong.
Because.
Last year.
First.
I.
So.
Yeah, I can.
Great.
Yeah, I'll. I'll. More. Um.
You're doing your best today.
I don't think. We.
Do.
Every time.
I say.
Thank you.
Every time I break.
You.
You.
Good.
My entire.
Dog.
Been.
I'm saying.
Really.
Do.
Good.
I'm.
Alright.
Really.
So.
I agree.
I mean, I have.
I'm.
Yeah.
But.
Yeah.
Question.
So we're gonna go ahead and call the meeting to order.
I am.
We're gonna call our meeting to order for December sixth, twenty twenty three. And we're going to welcome, um, Owen Fredette to lead us in the Fudge of Allegiance.
Well, I don't. We can. Just. You. But I'm. I'm. Even. This. Season. And to the Republic. For. Understand. One nation. Ununderpinned. And invincible. With liberty. And justice. Star.
Thank you.
Thank you. Yeah. Thank you very much. Okay. Alright. Alright, so at this point, we'll move to our student representative reports. And look, we'd like to go first. Okay.
Alright. So for the intro, all in sports hold this holiday sale during lunches on November second to third. The twenty first annual holiday craft fair was held on November fourth and students successfully can set up a breakdown for community service. And the guidance department income refreshments of. Uh, were. Choice were hosted on November first. And there was no school November tenth and on our Veterans Day and no school on the twenty third and the twenty fourth of November for Thanksgiving break. Um, apply NH or I am college bound day was held on November sixteenth and students were offered discounted price. I believe it was like three to five and new history on that day. Through the school. Parts and clubs, the math team held a Southern League Math Meet held on November sixteenth. Climate Change Initiative attended an overnight activism conference in Vermont from December second to third. For some honor societies, FFA or Feature Farmers of America held an organizational meeting on November second, third, seventh. NHS held calendar sales for December raffle and that started November the first. And sales were due by November twenty ninth. And NHS also inducted new members on November seventh. Members family, family members were invited and refreshments were provided. National Art Honor Society held open studio sessions on November second, sixth, eighth, and ninth. For N H S, N A H S students to fund and just use the art fund for their projects. Spanish Honor Society saw breakfast and lunch at the twenty first annual Holiday Craft Fair, which was on November fourth. And National English Honor Society held a knitting session, tea and cookies were provided on November thirtieth. As far as the arts goes, the art department hosted the Winter Arts Festival on November twenty ninth from six thirty to eight thirty P M. The Jasmine General Band and Forest performed several. Pieces. Well, key silver key and honorable mention art submissions were on display in the multipurpose room for viewing. For band and chorus, they held fundraiser meetings on November second, from six to eight P M. Band and chorus also called a mattress fundraiser on November eighteenth from ten A M to four P M. For theater, the Fall Musical Little Women performances propel on November tenth and eleven. As far as athletic updates, the fall season was pretty simple, so. The only really thing to report is a lot of bankers that they held. Press country team held banquet on November fifteenth from five seven. Vasco team held a banquet on November sixteenth from four to eight. Girls soccer banquet was on the sixteenth from six to seven. Girls volleyball banquet was on November twentieth from five to seven. And your track practice was held on November twenty seventh from four thirty five to six P M. And boys volleyball preseason conditioning was held on December second. And I often for coffee and see me in these. Thank you.
Thank you. Any questions? Thank you so much for coming and presenting. We appreciate the reports.
Thank you.
Alright, so some stuff at Dover High School that will be happening soon. On December eighteenth, we have our poetry at law performance, which is basically where students who have been elected from their classrooms will recite poems that they have memorized. And the winner basically will go on to a statewide competition. And it's gonna be held in the auditorium and not just students, but also parents are allowed to come and watch. Um, and then on December nineteenth, we're having C T C ambassador presentations for freshmen. Which is basically gonna help them kind of like decide if they want to participate in a C T C course. Which can help them decide what they wanna do in their future and help just a lot with future planning. Um, and then on January third and fifth, they're gonna have a try it out day for those C T C courses. Which it's gonna be during flex and you ba- basically just get to go do hands-on experiences in any of those courses that you decide. So there's like health science where you can do like stuff on, um. Dummies and stuff like that. There's woodworking, automotive, any stuff like that, that any of the freshmen and sophomores can participate in. And then this Friday, we have no school. Which also means that a couple Dover representatives are gonna be coming to Nottingham and we're basically gonna be talking to eighth graders about like. The freshman experience, C T C courses, extracurriculars, athletics. Upperclassmen experiences and also a lot about future planning because that's really important. Um, and then a little bit more to do with future planning. Freshmen this month are gonna start scheduling with their counselors to decide their four-year plan. Which is a really important part. So if you have a freshman at Dover, you definitely wanna encourage them to talk to their counselor. Because that basically just sets them out for having a really good high school experience. And then lastly, just some stuff to do with sports. We had our hockey jamboree this past weekend. And it basically started off the season and now games are gonna be held every Wednesday and Saturday. Which the schedule can be found on our DHS Hockey Instagram page. Um, softball is also starting our winter skills clinic this Saturday in the auxiliary gym. They're held from seven thirty to ten thirty for the next two weeks. And then the rest of the schedule. Is also found on the DHS Softball Boosters page, which can be found on Facebook. And then tomorrow night at seven, Dover, the ski team is hosting a movie night for the boosters and they're playing this movie called Land of the Giants. It's gonna be in the auditorium. They're gonna have pizza, snacks, a bunch of raffles and you can win like tickets to Wildcat, Cannon, golf rounds and a bunch of other gift cards. And one of the skiers in the movie is actually from North Conway. I know her myself and there's like just a ton of Olympic skiers and stuff like that. It's a really cool movie. So you should definitely. Purchase tickets if you can. You can purchase them online or at the door, but it's tomorrow at seven P M and the doors open at six P M.
Thank you. Any questions?
It's.
I guess.
But.
Thank you also for coming so far and all the, the, um. The information that you bring is very helpful for us. We appreciate it. Hey. Alright, so at this point, um. We have our, um. Bills and manifest which were sent to us today. I had a couple of questions on them. I think I will, um. I will just email those in. Um, I did sign them because the work was already done. The questions that I had, I don't know if anybody else had any or around, um. Um. Study sync and the timing of that, just the, the. Um, it was a curriculum purchase. I know we had talked about it and I've got the documents for that. So I was just trying to understand the timing of it and the impact budget. Um. There was a national weather forecasting. I wasn't sure if that was related to, um. What that was related to, if it was a curriculum item or not. I noticed the all dead rate increased, but the big questions were around the Palmer and Sicard, a circulator pump. Um, the blower motor. An, an additional item that was going to be handled between ten eleven and ten twenty four. Or eleven, ten, or, and I don't know if that's happened yet and I don't know how that's impacting the budget. And then EMC had changed orders for seven thousand and one thousand nine hundred and twenty six. And then the last piece was that there was a system shut off. There's a two hundred dollar charge for a, an inspection. Two classrooms were cold and it was determined that, um, there's no power at the zone valves. And so that was something that would need to be looked at later. But for right now, the system shut off and there's no power. So it's just, those were the questions I had related to the manifest. I don't know. Are there any others?
My question, and it's I think a larger question, can we have a, um. Full write-up of the curriculum, what we did end up purchasing? I think I'm a little confused in looking towards budget, even to be able to answer those questions. What we were able to purchase with what we had funds for, then additional funds were put in from adequacy. So what was, if additional funds were purchased or that just. Covered what we had overspent and then what we still need to spend to be up to date with what we initially had wanted to purchase. So kind of a, a breakdown of, of where we're at with that, of what needs to be. Purchased from the original request. I just, just to have it all in one place, kind of to track where we were with the curriculum-related expenses would be helpful.
You know, I think also a question of did the money from the capital reserve actually get transferred out of the reserve?
Yeah.
In which case it's completely depleted. So we need to really, in order to do. A warrant article, we really need to have a better understanding of how much do we need next year, the year after, the year after that. Um, I don't, I think, uh, Ms. Watt gave us a breakdown of like the cycle of when they would be reviewed and purchased, but we don't have. The numbers that we need to, to fund that capital reserve.
Right, so that curriculum reserve, we probably are getting to the point where we should know our reserve numbers at. December, so we can begin to look at the warrant articles and determine how to.
Probably the next meeting.
Yeah.
Drafts of the one.
Yeah. So. So next meeting, if we do warrant article drafts, we would, we would need to see the current balances. And I think I had spoken to you, um, the other day about the one forty. We weren't sure if that had happened or not coming. Out for the roof.
Yeah, I think that was done in July or August or someone, but I'll double check.
It was taken from the reserve.
Time.
It's.
I think, I think so. I, I just know I think it was textbook one is the only one I, I physically requested, but I, I can look to see all the ones have. I did a blanket question for all the capital reserves.
Okay.
I believe, I believe I had questioned the roof one as well. My best recollection is that. That had been looked up and it hadn't been.
Okay.
I was sticky in my desk for quite a while about that, but we'll come down and I don't want him to speak.
But that'll definitely, we can talk about it more when we discuss C I P. Yeah. Um, yeah, funding those reserves. So knowing what the balances are and then.
So the note is for the next meeting, we'll see all the current reserve balances and the draft warrant articles.
So yeah, all the curriculum things. So what we bought, what we still need and then, um, estimates for what we will need to be purchasing.
It was, um, at our Aug- August second meeting, we talked about.
What?
Yes, the wonders and study sync, but it, but just when I saw it. Here from November to November and it was, I think, six thousand dollars. But we have been looking at forty one thousand three nineteen for wonders and study sync. That's the E L A for six to eight. So. If anyone needs any of these, just to refresh it. If I've gotten here, thank you. Okay. So. Alright. So that kind of gets us through the bills and manifests. Were there any other, um, questions on those or? Yes. Alright, so at this point, um. We will open for a public comment. I don't know if anyone has any comment for anything, um, that we'll be discussing this evening on our agenda. Public comments at all? Any public comment?
Good.
Alright, thank you so much. Um, we also will have. A public comment at the end. So. Welcome to follow up on anything at that point. Alright, so at this point, um, we can do, I think the plan tonight was to do a non-public session. Early in the meeting, it shouldn't take very long to cover, um. A grievance update. We will not get much information because it's something that we know, we don't get a lot of detail on, um, on the process, but we'll just have an update. Um, some, uh, calendar update. And we have, um. Uh, requests, parent requests for student placement.
Because the parents aren't here, I think all those can wait till on public at the end. They were going to be the parent request for.
Mm-hmm.
It was actually gonna be.
They. Well, I thought that they were going to be here and they're not here, so I think they can all wait till the end.
Well, we had planned at the end, we had planned to kind of move officially through and then, um, to talk about the evaluation. Just the board itself and kind of.
So if you want.
So we could do this now, that would probably be official, if you're.
Right.
Whatever.
To.
Miss Duncan's.
Right.
First.
Yeah.
Okay.
Yeah, then you.
Yeah.
Okay.
Yeah.
Um, okay. So, um, I always like to keep you, uh, updated on the indicators through the D O E. So, uh, in terms of indicator fourteen, we did have the window for responses closed, um, on the twenty second in November. That is the indicator that collects. Um, post school outcomes. So it's for students that have graduated from high school, um, and then it tracks how and what they're doing after high school. Um, the state of New Hampshire notoriously, uh, is a little bit tricky for responses. We have a very low response rate in the state. Um, so that is something that the D O E has been looking at. Um, we did have a pretty low response rate for Nottingham as well. Um, so it's something they've offered funding to try to get things out there. Uh, one of the pieces with Nottingham is we have a small population. So when you're talking about one year, you're, it's only a few kids who have graduated. Um, so we did put it out there. I think we had one response. Um, the window has closed. We're in compliance, but it is something to think about. If they're gonna continue, um, the response window in that way, how are we capturing our information? Um, and what information is important for us for programming as well, not just from a D O E indicator standpoint. Um, we did have our paraprofessional staff and our related service providers have a workshop with M S B. Um, X Logs is our billing software for Medicaid to Schools program. They rolled out a new platform this year. Um, it has certainly come with some kinks along the way, um, just in terms of their development. So we gave an opportunity for the M S B staff to come and work with our staff directly. Um, we ran a workshop through the day where, uh, paraprofessionals could meet in small groups, have some hands-on training, ensure that they're logging their sessions appropriately. Um, to continue that compliance and ensure that we're doing what we need to do, um, if we were to be audited again, that, um, we're in compliance. Uh, I did note that we have also been, um, using some of our I D A bots to consult with Maria Nice from Language and Learning. Um, you know, some of you are familiar with her. She was here years ago, um, when we began our R T I model. Uh, and she's been helping us look at our interventions and we are very good in a lot of ways with our interventions. We, I feel like we were ahead of the curve with the science of reading. Um, we have strong phonics and decoding, um, but really looking at our intensity, our duration, how are we maximizing students', um. Practice time within that time, how are we aligning with tier one, um, for students that maybe don't. Fit in the traditional intervention double-dip model. Are we being thoughtful and individualized in those interventions to really push to close achievement gaps? Um, so she's begun to consult with the intervention team, um, and the hope is to then also, um, you know, have some different grade levels work with her as well in that conjunction, as we know, to. Work with kids in both the classroom setting and the intervention setting. Um, just kind of auditing and evaluating what we're doing. Um, and how we can ensure that we're as effective as possible. Um, written expression is a big component of it as well. I've talked about that a lot here. And I think that we've highlighted it as an area of need, but one of our tricky spots is time to address that need. When we have such strong math interventions and we have strong reading interventions and. Uh, there's only so many hours in the day. So how are we going to meet all of those needs with a small amount of time that we have and be as effective as possible? Um, in order that we continue to have a student requiring services at a charter school, only one. Um, we do have a high school student who is in our end program who has returned, um, back to the traditional high school setting. So, um, that's exciting. For her. And then we do have one student who continues, continued to be enrolled in the Dover Adult Ed Program, working towards their high set, um, with the expectation that that will be completed within the next couple of months. In terms of preschool, um, I just think it's fun to update you guys in terms of what preschool is doing. It's like a light part of my. Job. And, um, so I did note that they have finished up their unit on Pete the Cat and gave you all the, the details on the different books and activities and how. Um, they tie it to those early literacy and numeracy skills. Um, they also know, Ron has shared at the last meeting that we had, um, an allocation from Cratchit Mountain Foundation, which is pretty exciting for, um, a sensory. Room. Uh, we don't necessarily have a room, um, but we're got, working creatively in terms of how can we meet that need without that space? So I've met with Jen O, the preschool, um, teacher and Wendy R O T and Dean R B C B A and really thinking about our student needs, especially at preschoolers. We have a few kiddos with some pretty complex needs and how can we use that money to really think about, um, creatively meeting those needs? Um, when it's nice, it's a little bit extra, you know? So that's been a fun project and. Um, then I just keep you updated in the waiting list, which at this point is, is pretty stagnant in terms of it's. We're pretty level with our numbers. We haven't necessarily had any new spaces open up. Um, we haven't had a huge influx of people this time of year looking for space either. Uh, we do plan on reaching out to current families, um, in late January likely for enrollment. For next year and then we'll begin, um, our advertisement in terms of our lottery and set our date for when we're going to draw the lottery. I picture, um, probably late. Uh, like late March, early April, um, somewhere in that window. I'm gonna speak with a couple other districts just who are, are in that model and when do they find that sweet spot? Of giving those families time to plan ahead, but also ensuring that, um, we have the time to get the, as many people that want to, uh, that are even that. So, and then at the bottom is just enrollment numbers across placements. Um, so you can see it's a pretty steady number. We do have six open referrals right now, um. Our numbers have fluctuated within the high school and the elementary setting, but for the most part, overall, are staying pretty consistent at that one hundred mark.
Questions? I, I mean, at our last meeting, I know we've mentioned a little about.
You should.
School and tuition. Was that related to you about looking at, um, tuition?
Yeah.
And, you know, if it's. If we have a sense that, um, kind of what the. Cost it is to run preschool, if we can really tease that out because we use in-house service providers, if that's really, um.
Maybe it's more like the cost for the tuition students.
Right.
Like picking out.
The tuition, like almost removing the special ed costs and, and looking at if we do have a waiting list and if it is. You know, um, are we, um. Should we make any changes to the pricing structure? Now, I know you've given us some information before kind of about.
Yeah, they can.
How.
It's.
And whatnot. Um, so I know we just mentioned it before, looking at budgeting, um, if, if it's something that we should. Re-look at and possibly make changes to. Has it gone up and do you have a sense of what the?
No, and it's interesting because they just had another director reach out to me with that same question today. So. So I think a lot of boards and districts are having that same, you know, question and conversation. Um, I can look at the, our related service providers. Pretty much they are in there to service our students that have I U Ps. They're not providing a lot of like R T I in there, so, uh, they do have some small group and obviously there's a benefit. And if they're running a small group and, you know, kids can cycle through, but in terms of a cost piece of it, like they're pretty, um, it doesn't necessarily cost more. Like to have tuition students in there. It's, I think it's more keeping that fifty fifty and having the peer models and, um, how we've gotten our, you know, not needing a program approval per se, but having that early childhood. Um, so I'll look back at the comparatives though and maybe then I'll put, you know, for the next meeting, just looking at tuition and, um. Revenue, maybe Bill and I can talk about that as well.
And we definitely wanted to estimate her revenue, at least based on current tuition rate, make sure that that estimated revenue is included.
Yeah.
Hopefully.
So if we know the total number of spots, so we'll probably be filled in both classes.
Absolutely.
Then putting that full revenue in.
Actually, I think my answer to that, I got some information from, uh, Jennifer who runs. The preschool. And so she, I did email her after I made the other day and she sent me some numbers. I think I actually did update that in.
In the.
Yes, I think, I think it went up just by, like, maybe two thousand dollars.
Okay.
Roughly, I think it's twenty-three thousand five hundred, I think is what it came to me. So I think it was maybe twenty-two thousand before, can't remember quite clearly.
And what about the playgrounds concept?
Well, the new bill kind of put me on a, on a pause, just because it was in terms of thinking about a brand-new playground and the cost, the the new, the bill that was passed requires a certain
The bo- the
Bottom of the playground, which can be extremely pricey. And so we're gonna need to think creatively in terms of is it updating the current playground and taking a portion? I know when Jeff and I had kind of toured around, we looked at like behind the swings, that there's some open space and that you could potentially do something in there and then that way it would also be accessible to some of our younger kids, you know, like you can play with it a little bit more as well. It wouldn't be as far removed. But doing the the groundwork is pretty expensive. It kind of knocked it into a different ballpark. So it's certainly still on the radar. It's just creatively, how do we fund it?
Those were some of the questions that I also posed when I spoke with the C M M Kids Foundation, looking at the data and what we have. It's tough because our district isn't one of the meatier districts that they tend to fund. I don't know if we'll qualify, but they do give out three-year grants that are approximately a hundred thousand dollars a year. We are on their radar. And looked at, she sent us several links in some companies that do give some other grants. But another option might be for some particular playground, I don't know if they call them toys, but playground structures.
Yeah, it's different, like adaptive components and thinking about it from an adaptive lens and then how can you
A structure or a, that toy is not the word, but a
Equipment.
Piece of equipment that would that would be adaptive versus a full entire separate area, but it's definitely on our radar and we'll reach out to everyone we can.
How does the schedule coordinate with recess with the students at, you know, K through eight versus when a preschoolers, would it, would there be overlap in time or not?
There is not overlap. Jen keeps that, just because they're with, she looks at the master schedule and works it around.
So, so they could still be on the playgrounds as
And one of the benefits to that, I mean, there is a preference in the sense that we, that one of the biggest benefits of that priest, of the priest being here is that kids are becoming acclimated to our building so much earlier, right? And so having a priest, having a playground that's inside of a playground, now they're acclimating even to the playground earlier, and there may also be some opportunity for when kindergarten, when the kindergarten starts, you could have some overlap there if they're not out at the same time. So there is some benefit of not having it completely removed. It's just a matter of how are we gonna creatively fund it and make it work for everybody. I don't wanna take away from the existing either, but I think we can make it work. And when Jeff and I looked at it, he felt the same way.
Any other questions? Thank you very much.
Thank you for putting me to work on. I appreciate it.
So at this point, we would go ahead with our non-public session and again, would we ninety-one, eight, three? Or what would you recommend? Probably just get an overview of the request.
A C. A C K?
Yeah. Okay.
So I make a motion to go into non-public session under R S N ninety-one, eight, three, run the number two, A C, okay?
One second.
Okay, we will call in on, yes, Ms. Martin?
Yes.
Ms. Sebastian?
Yes.
Mrs. Kilbrass?
Yes.
And Ms. Warren?
Yes.
So officially a non-public at seven oh four.